Good afternoon and welcome to this first online meeting of the Audit Committee. Welcome everybody who is attending. First of all, there are no apologies for absence or substitutions, that's item one on the agenda. So, item two is to approve of correct record limits of the meeting held on the 14th of January 2020. Are there any who do not wish to approve, if so speak now, otherwise I will assume it's approved. Okay, approved. Declarations of interest, which is item three. Any declarations of interest in specifics? Okay, none, declared. Right. Item four. The Draft Internal Audit Plan and Strategy 2021 through to 2022/23. This is by the Head of Internal Audit from BDO. I will let BDO explain what that means. This is a report we should have received at our March meeting, which was cancelled because of the lockdown. I believe there have been one or two minor amendments made to it, but I'll pass it over to BDO to introduce and talk about this.
Thank you very much. So, I'm Greg Rubens, I'm the Partner from BDO and the Head of Internal Audit. This is obviously our first plan and we're very pleased to be appointed as internal auditors and look forward to working with the Council. Just a little bit about BDO, we are one of the larger accounting firms, we've got the sort of full range of services you'd expect. And my team is a public sector specialist team, so we only do public sector work and we've got a lot of local authority experience. So you should be getting that sort of tailored approach. Within the rest of the team, we've got Gerpreet Dulay, who's the Audit Manager, he can't make it unfortunately today. But Charlotte Thomas, who is on the call, is the Team Leader and Charlotte will be working with the officers within the Council. I'm not planning to go through the plan in detail, as you said, it was originally going to be ready for March. We've talked to officers about it, it reflects the key risks we think that you were facing, certainly at the time that we prepared it. And obviously, there has been a big change of COVID since the plan was produced. And I think as a result of that, we're going to need to be flexible about the way the plan is firstly delivered. Because obviously, it will be dependent on the availability of officers at what is a very busy and difficult time. And also, you know, being able to produce some of this work remotely while we're still on lockdown. But secondly, also, we'll need to reflect sort of emerging risks from COVID. And we're seeing across the patch for local authorities, it's causing huge financial pressures as well as operational issues as well. So we'll need to reflect on that as the year goes by. And it might be that we need to be flexible about the plan, obviously bring back to the Audit Committee if there are any changes. Just wanted to make a couple of other points. Firstly, obviously, we will have a handover with RSM. We were waiting until this meeting and obviously, once they've done all the follow-up they need to do, we'll then have a full handover and we'll take on their recommendations and we'll be following those up in due course. I think our approach is fairly similar to RSM, but we do give, I think we're different from them in that we give two opinions on each report. So one opinion for the design of the controls and another opinion for the effectiveness of the controls. So that's a slight change, but otherwise, I think you'll see, you know, it's very similar to the RSM approach. And the final point I wanted to make was just that we want to work with the Audit Committee and we're very happy to contribute to any training or support that the Audit Committee needs as we go through the year. Again, very happy to support that. As I said, I'm not going to go through the individual audits, but I'm very happy to take any questions or comments, as is Charlotte. So I'll stop at that point, thank you.
Okay, I'll go through each member of the committee in turn to see if you have any questions you'd like to raise. Okay, councillor Lawrence. Councillor Elliot.
No questions, Bob, thank you.
Councillor Fox.
Yes, if I could just raise something, please. On page 15, which is page five of the report, it does talk about the review of the rates charger and fees regarding tree teams, trade waste, garden waste, et cetera. I would hope that the pet crematorium would be added to that because it's actually a source of income generation for us. And I would like to know if, I know that BDO's sort of added value would be to compare it to other local authorities. But being as our, perhaps our main competition may be private businesses for these areas, would we also be looking to review the fees in comparison to private businesses as well? Thank you.
Okay, if you're happy for me to respond, that's fine to include crematorium as part of that. Obviously, we'll check with officers, that's fine by them, but certainly it doesn't cause us an issue. And secondly, yes, I mean, I think a starting point would be, of course, to ask the Council what benchmarking you've done in terms of private businesses in the area, you'll know them better than us. But we're very, again, we can easily extend the work to look at any published charges as part of doing the audit.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Right, councillor Greensmith. Councillor Thomas. Okay, as there are no questions.
Excuse me, Bob. You didn't ask me?
Who is that?
It's councillor Clooney.
I'm sure I did, I apologise, I thought I went through people in order, I apologise.
Sorry, sorry.
Question, it's my apologies.
Yes, I raised my hand as well, anyway. Can you not? Okay. Anyway. So yeah, I think I had a couple of things, actually. First of all, I think you touched on that you're going to follow up with the previous auditors on things they found like, I know there was particular things about the IT, there was particular issues, wasn't there? So I was just curious about how that was going to be carried forward because there seemed to be some work that was required around that. That was one question. I've got another, another question was about, there was the bit about waste and recycling, it's on page 24 of our pack, but it's page 14 if you're thinking. And I don't know if there's any way of looking to get in better recycling rates or how we find out what the issues are by anything that comes out from the Internal Audit, because that's quite a big thing at the moment. And then my final thing was, sorry to ask lots of questions. My final thing was on page 32 of our pack and page 22 of the BDO bit was about the time and the time required for the audit. And it seemed to be implying that the number of days we'd put in was quite low and that there is going to be additional charges. But I'm wondering if that's to do with our budget or whether it was, you know, that's just a normal thing that happens.
Okay, I'll pick up a couple of the points and maybe let Charlotte talk about the follow-up process. But if I just talk about the waste and recycling, again, I think that's a good suggestion. We're very happy to look at how you could improve recycling rates and looking at best practice against other authorities. We have done that elsewhere. The number of days is, yes, I mean, we were effectively told as part of the tender process, what the number of days is the Council wanted, which I think is based on a budget. All we are at this time is suggesting benchmarking it against others, it is slightly on the low side. But I mean, I think, let's see how it goes. We're going to, I think the plan is reasonable coverage for the year. I'm comfortable, we can give a Head of Internal Audit opinion off the back of that plan. So we'll see how things go. And obviously, COVID again is an example of a new risk emerging, which might mean we need to change the plan or potentially add some days in, but we'll agree that as the year goes by, we're comfortable with the plan as it currently is. I'll pass on to Charlotte to talk about follow-up.
Thanks, hi everyone. Yeah, in terms of follow-up, I think the plan was really to speak with you, Alison, about liaising with RSM, about getting all of the information from the previous follow-up reports. And the way that we tend to do it is to provide a quarterly update on follow-up to you at the Audit Committee. So, and present it in a report. So I think, I think that's quite similar to what you've already been receiving. And yeah, and in terms of linking it to IT, I think we've got a cyber risk review in the plan for this year. And I know if we're speaking to Helen earlier in the week, that, you know, capacity is going to be very difficult at the moment because IT is so overloaded with everything going on. But part of the, we're doing an advisory piece on cyber risk, so that can link in with some of those controls potentially. And anything else that comes up during my chat with Helen that's scheduled for next week, obviously, we'll look into a bit more detail. And we can always adjust the plan if that's something that we want to fill in this year rather than later on, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Everybody's had a chance to ask questions and therefore moves the recommendation to receive the report and approves the internal audit plan and strategy as documented in the report. Okay. Right, agenda item five. Quarter Management Scorecard, quarter three. The Assistant Finance is going to lead on this, I think.
Hi, yes, Banker Chair, so yes, this is our usual report, quarterly update for members on the current level of assurance that can be provided against each of the Council's 13 corporate risks. This is a quarter three report for the period ending December 2019 and was originally due to be presented to this committee in March, but that meeting, obviously, we all know was cancelled due to the COVID pandemic. You will note on page 40 that the report highlights that the emerging risk of COVID-19 during quarter four, detailing that officers were engaged in assessing all of the potential risks, for example, service delivery, health and safety, and the financial impacts and to determine how these could be mitigated and managed, including the updated business continuity plans. So of course, since then, much has happened since we drafted that report in respect of the management of risk due to the pandemic and SLT are currently reviewing the impact on corporate risk levels. So whilst lots of positive risk management work is underway, perhaps unsurprisingly, the pandemic presents a downside risk for the Council and the details are reflected in the Risk Register and this will report to the next committee, which is in July. So just a few weeks away, that you'll get a little bit more of a detailed report than the one that's presented today. So the quarter report is still here for completeness. We're given the impact and the fact that we are going to bring in a further report next month. This is somewhat of a holder report. So today I do post technical reporters rad and just focus on the key risk issues and actions that have occurred during this period. So of the 13 corporate risks, there was only one change to the current risk level during quarter three, that being in relation to risk one, which was failure to prevent budget overheating once the budget has been set. So this, the change that we've seen for this quarter was actually an improvement in the risk level, where we moved it to a current level V1, which is our target level, meaning that there are no outstanding control gaps in respect of that risk. So this was based on our quarter three budget monitoring position, which confirmed that outturn was expected to be in line with budget. So despite we've got some deferrals in our efficiency programme, which were contained within, these were contained within Cabinet's maximum budget by application of the Budget Reduction Risk Reserve and other savings that we found during the year. So that's all contained and we expect that to still be the case. We are still finalising the budget outturn for the year end and there have been some delays on that due to COVID-19, but I still expect that that will be broadly in line. But we'll confirm that in the report to the committee next quarter. So of our 13 corporate risks, the six of them are now fully mitigated, fully controlled, where we've got no outstanding control gaps, but the remaining seven still have actions outstanding. So just to bring some focus on to the two red risk areas that we have. So first of all, there's risk two, which is failure to maintain financial integrity. So this is the Council's most significant risk issue. The Council's, as part of the actions for during quarter three running into quarter four, can confirm that a full review of the Council's medium-term financial plan and financial strategy was completed and a new target for the efficiency programme was included in the Budget Council Report and was approved by Council in March. So what the financial strategy did do was highlight for members that that was developed against a backdrop of some significant uncertainties around the future of local funding. It mainly being the deferral of the Fair Funding Review and the Business Rates Retention Scheme alongside only having a one-year spending review. And due to those uncertainties, the level of risk remains high. And there is a likelihood that that risk level is going to increase again in the next report due to COVID-19. And I think we'll be reporting that into committee next month. So the other red risk to mention is the failure to properly utilise IT and prevent data loss. Members will recall that the main reason for that risk was the apparatus housing needs system, which isn't GDPR compliant. So during quarter three, some further actions were taken and we've identified the system amendments that are going to be required to ensure that that system can become compliant. There has been a further delay in implementing those due to COVID, but work is ongoing to implement them and we expect them now to be done within the next couple of quarters. So finally, there was just to note there, the three high-risk recommendations that impact on the Risk Register arising from the IT Controls Audit that councillor Clooney has referred to. So they obviously have a negative impact on the Risk Register and the annual audit opinion. But we'll come back to those in items later on in the agenda. And the recommendation there is on page 39 for members to note the progress of the actions in the Corporate Risk Register. And I'll take any questions.
Right, I'll go through again. If you have a question and I ask it for your name, please ask it. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Clooney.
No, fine, thanks.
Councillor Elliot.
Just, as the new, the additional IT technical officers, are they now in post?
I'm not sure, I don't think they're in post yet, I think, have you got an update on that, Helen?
Yes, thank you Chair, if I may. So the easy answer to that question, councillor Elliot, is no. You can imagine with the current circumstances, obviously, recruitment is incredibly difficult at the moment. So the budget was approved as part of the Budget Council process and the expectation was that we would launch the recruitment straight after that. But unfortunately, we've been in lockdown since then, so it is still to be moved.
All right, that's fine, thank you.
Councillor Fox.
No, thank you.
Councillor Greensmith.
No, thank you.
And councillor Thomas.
No, thank you.
Therefore, I propose that we note the progress of actions identified within the Corporate Risk Register as put down on page 39. Okay.
Councillor Collis, can you, can you just, because we're all remote, can you just make sure that everybody's voting? So you proposed it and you do need somebody to second and vote on everything still.
I'm happy to second that.
Any not voting for?
No, I was going to second it, but I was muted, sorry.
Anybody not voting for? Anybody voting against? Any abstentions? Okay, passed. Right, agenda item six. The Internal Audit Progress Report by RSM. Our recommendation is to receive the fourth note actions taken or to be taken. Who's going to be leading on this one, item six?
That's me, Bob. Listen.
Lucky you.
Yes, thank you Chair. So yes, this report presents the Internal Audit Progress Report for 2019/20 and it summarises the outcome of internal audit activity, which was completed by the RSM internal audit team during the period December 2019 to March 2020. Highlights key findings and any concerns that were identified. As we've referenced earlier, unfortunately, RSM won't be joining us today because they don't have the contract with the Council. So I'll summarise some of the findings for members. So within that report, there were six audits finalised during that period and they are listed in the report at paragraph 2.1 on page 53. If I, if I take, generally take the report as read, but turn to the appendix, which includes the detailed findings. The introduction on page 57 confirms that with the conclusion of these six reports, that 100% of the 2020 internal audit was completed. The table at section two on page 58 summarises the conclusions and opinions issued on each of the six specified audits within the report. So two were with green substantial assurance, those being risk management and recruitment and retention. Two were amber with reasonable assurance, those being leisure centres and pre-application advice. And one with an orange partial assurance, IT general controls, which have already been mentioned. So the follow-up report, whilst it's not part of the opinion, also found little progress from the recommendations, so you'll see that in that summary as well. The green and amber conclusions result in a positive impact on the annual audit opinion and the orange a negative impact on the annual audit opinion. All of the results for the year are brought together in an overall assessment for the annual internal audit opinion, which is actually the next item on the agenda. So the summary of the key findings for each of these reports are detailed on pages 59 to 61 and that lists all the high and medium priority actions. Detailed findings are included in pages 66 to 101. So in terms of IT general controls, this is the report with partial assurance. This was derived from three high priority actions, three medium and six low. So the high and medium priority actions are listed in the report. And specifically, the high-risk actions related to the upgrade of business continuity planning in respect to potential IT failure across the Council. The implementation of the action plan to achieve PSN compliance and the effectiveness of the overview of patching across the IT estates, which increase in the vulnerabilities might be exploited. So Helen, you've got an update of where we are with implementing some of those?
Yes, thank you Chair. If I may come in at that point, there's obviously been some discussion about IT controls and I would imagine that all of the committee would have concerns about the audit. What I would say as Director responsible for IT is that the findings and recommendations are not surprising, given the pressures and demands on IT. Just to give you a little bit of context, you'll appreciate the work that our IT department fulfils for the Council is very varied and includes a vast range of items, including maintaining and securing existing systems, installing new systems and software, maintenance and replacement of a wide range of devices, including telephony, mobile phones, PCs, laptops, iPads, as well as key infrastructure such as servers and printers and wiring and switches. They also deal with help desk inquiries for support from officers and members. And last year, you will appreciate that they delivered some quite significant projects. So one of those was rollout of iPads to members. So we've created an additional burden of 41 devices on our estate. But also, due to the change in the way that Microsoft operate, we had to migrate to Windows 10, Office 365 and roll out replacement PCs and laptops to all staff. And just to put that in context for you, we would normally run a replacement programme over probably five years. And actually, we had to issue new equipment to staff over a matter of months. So that particular project was condensed over a very, very short period of time. Again, just to give you a little bit of context, there are currently in excess of 70 projects on the IT project list to deliver over the next few years. And that does not include, as I say, sort of day-to-day help desk inquiries that go into them on a daily basis. So there are some huge competing interests on IT time and patching did fall behind. However, before this audit was actually in place, we did identify that there was a need for additional staffing resource within IT. And some time ago, SLT did actually agree to the addition of a part-time member of, sorry, a temporary member of staff to the establishment. Unfortunately, after, I believe it was three rounds of recruitment, we were unable to recruit to that post. And that's why SLT agreed that an additional permanent member of staff was necessary. And that bid went into the budget round and as we've already mentioned, that was approved at full council in March. Just in relation to the recommendations, again, I won't go through all of them, but perhaps it would be useful for me to just cover those main ones for you. So item number one, as Alison has already mentioned, related to business continuity plans. So this wasn't an action that fell within the IT service. This was an action that fell within the health and safety and an emergency planning role. And that has been completed, you'll be pleased to hear. And that was predominantly as a result of the COVID-19 business impact assessments, which were carried out as part of the COVID-19 preparations. So there's a little bit more work to do, we do need to finesse those plans. But the business impact assessment templates were created very quickly with guidance. They were issued to service managers and they have been completed. So we have completed that particular action from the IT audit perspective. Progress has also been made in relation to item two, which is the PSN compliance. Unfortunately, that will not be completed in full now until July 2020 as a result of the impact of COVID. So again, you will imagine that it was a significant piece of work to make sure that our officers were able to work remotely very, very quickly during March. We had to divert our full IT resource to enabling this to happen. As a result, this particular item has slipped slightly. And then item three, which relates to the patching. A report went into SLT back in November with an overview of the patching situation and regular reporting and monitoring is now being carried out within the IT service to make sure that we are on top of the patching. Again, just to allay any concerns, some of the patching of our systems is actually carried out automatically. We don't need to actually intervene in that. So I don't want you to believe that the systems are exposed, that they're not being patched. There is regular patching going on, there is just a recognition that there is a little bit of a gap and a delay in that. But again, I'd like to assure you that that is back on track. And SLT have very much made it clear that that needs to be a priority piece of work for IT moving forward. So when there's the competing interests of service areas coming forward with projects, there's a recognition that patching is important. So that's all I would like to say at this moment, Chair, but I'm happy to take any questions if any members of the committee have any.
Okay, thank you both for your presentations. Right, questioning, I'll go through again. Councillor Lawrence.
I have no questions.
Councillor Clooney.
No, no questions, just a comment to thank everyone for their work on the getting the IT stuff, you know, off-site to help people.
Thank you. Councillor Elliot.
No questions, thank you.
Councillor Fox.
No, thank you.
Councillor Greensmith.
No questions, thank you.
Councillor Thomas.
No questions.
Thank you. Right.
Chair. Chair, it's Mike, can I just interject? We haven't had any high recommendations for a long time. Normally, we'd ask for a report to come to the next Audit Committee. Could I suggest that Helen writes current position on those three high risks for the next meeting?
Good idea, thank you. Right. The recommendation is that members receive the report and note actions taken or to be taken. And I'll also add that comment made by Mike. Do that. Anybody? Yes, Boyd.
I was going to second it. He needed it seconded.
Good. Thanks, Boyd, for seconding it. Anybody voting against? Anybody abstaining? Careful, that motion, I think, has been carried. Okay, agenda item seven. This is what we had to replace with documentation. Again, there's concern in it about IT. Recommendation is that members are requested to receive and accept the report presented. Okay. Chris Williams, head of RSM. Who's early on this then?
That's me again, councillor Collis. So, I'll pick this one up as RSM aren't here. Thank you, Chair. So, yes, this report summarizes the activities on internal audit during 2019-20 and includes the opinion of the head of internal audit on the overall adequacy and effectiveness of the council's internal control environment. Internal audit is a key part of the council's assurance cycle and helps to inform and update our risk profile. The internal audit work and the head of internal audit opinion is one of our sources of assurance, which informs our annual governance statement, which were required by regulation to produce as an accompanying statement. The overall opinion issued scheduling board council for 2019-20 is positive and is shown on page nine of the appendix. And it states that the council has adequate and effective framework for risk management, governance and internal control. However, our work has identified further enhancements to the framework to ensure that it remains adequate and effective. This is derived from the internal audit work and findings throughout the year on risk management and internal control, which are summarized in paragraphs 27 and 28 of the report, with the full summary of the reports detailed at appendix B on page 14. Only one of these reports concluded that partial assurance, so it's only one that was having a slight negative impact on the opinion overall. So, during 1920, the review of the corporate governance was also undertaken by internal audit and that reported positively on the governance framework in place and concluded that the council could take substantial assurance from that review. So, in summary, the annual audit opinion issued by the head of internal audit is positive and will feed into the annual governance statement, the draft of which will be presented to audit committee in July. So, the recommendation is there for members to act out the report on page five.
Yeah. Right. Any other officer going to contribute? No? Okay. Questions then from councillor Lawrence?
I have no questions.
Councillor Clooney.
No questions.
Councillor Elliot.
I have a question, but I suppose we need RSM there too, because it's down to how they grade them with the colours. And so, reasonable assurance is in the yellow and partial assurance, we've got one in partial assurance out of everything, that's in the amber. I was just seeing how close those two were and how easy it was to slip from reasonable assurance to partial assurance, especially with one of the issues which is safeguarding.
You want to come back on that, Alison?
Yeah, so I think you're right, councillor Elliot. It's not straightforward to see what the underlying metrics are that sit beneath some of these. But generally, if there are more high and medium risk actions, then they'll feed into those more negative assurances that you see there. So, was it a specific one that you were concerned about? Is it safeguarding? Yeah, so then that's three mediums. So, they'll look at that in the context of, well, I'm guessing they'll look at that in the context of the overall report, but the low actions are advisory actions, so they don't tend to contribute to the opinion, which is why the reports only focus on the high and medium actions. And generally, the more of the, the higher the number of actions are usually, the higher the assurance level.
Okay. Happy with that, councillor Elliot?
Yeah.
There is actually a summary on page 16 of how the levels of assurance are reflected.
I've got that here.
Yeah.
Wanted to know how close they were, one to one to drop into the other.
Yeah, so what I don't have is what the numbers have to be to make it switch between.
Yeah.
So, I can take that back if you would like more information.
Yeah, I would, yeah, especially with safeguarding. I think with recent events, the councils and exposure, we need to be very careful of the safeguarding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bob, I know that obviously this is BDO's report, sorry, RSM report. But I'm wondering if BDO have got any comment in general on how they would assess the difference between the various levels?
It is difficult because we all have our own methodology. In terms of the BDO methodology, we don't have firm metrics. So, we don't say, you know, if it's three mediums, it's partial. If it's two mediums, it's full. We try and take a step back and look at it in the round and say, what's reasonable for this particular report? I think the danger, if you have these firm metrics, is you end up arguing with people about whether a recommendation is a medium or a low because they want to influence the opinion. And I would rather just look at it in the round and I suspect that's probably what RSM do as well.
Yeah, I think that's probably true. I think you can see that from the pre-application advice report, that actually there's only one medium priority action there, but it still has the same assurance level as safeguarding. So, I'll look at it in a broader context.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. All right. Councillor Fox.
No questions.
Councillor Greensmith.
No questions, thank you.
Councillor Thomas.
Sorry, delayed with my mute button there. No, nothing for me.
Okay. Recommendation on page five is members are requested to receive and accept the report as presented. I'll move that.
Second.
That was councillor Lawrence, was it?
It was.
Right, anybody voting against? Anybody abstaining? Passed then. Okay. Agenda item. I never know how to pronounce it. Mazars, Mazars. External audit, audit standard you in random. Again, it's you, Alison.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, yes, this report is prepared by Mazars, the council's external auditors, and presents the external audit plan for the year ending 31st of March 2020. The appendix details the Mazars audit approach, highlighting areas of significant audit risk and key areas of judgment that will be exercised in completion of the audit and in arriving at their opinion on the 2019-20 financial statements, including the annual governance statement and the value for money arrangements for the council. The audit is completed to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement and their work is focused on those aspects of the business which they consider to be at higher risk of misstatement, such as those affected by management judgements or estimation, or even application of new standards and any changes in policy. So, the work is therefore risk-based and the key risk issues that are detailed on page 1 to 8 include the management override controls, property plan and equipment valuations and the pension fund valuations. These are pretty much the same as we've had last year. So, the reason the property plan and equipment and pension valuations are in there, they're the most significant items within the council's balance sheet and they do involve high degree of estimation. So, because of that high degree of estimation and judgment, the audit will focus on those issues to ensure material accuracy. And they will challenge the assumptions and the methods employed and they will assess the competency and skills of the valuers that complete that work. So, the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, of course, will be considered. That wasn't part of the initial report that is now with members, but it will be considered as part of the audit. But as the impact on the final month of 2019-20, the external auditors are not expected to be material in terms of the accounts, although it does add further risks to the property valuations. So, an additional verification will be required for property and they are likely to instruct their own valuer for an independent view. COVID-19 will also impact on the annual governance statement, the narrative statement, and adds further risks to the value for any judgement. So, and in addition to all of that, there will be a delay in the production of the account. So, that has been changed by regulation. The accounts must now be finalized by the end of November and the audit will actually commence in August rather than in June, as detailed in the draft plan. So, that was all I had to say there. The recommendation, members, is to approve the plan on page 119.
Okay, let's go through the questions. Thank you, Alison. Right, Mary, councillor Lawrence?
No questions.
Councillor Clooney?
No questions.
Councillor Elliot?
No questions.
Councillor Fox?
No questions, thank you.
Councillor Greensmith?
Yes, I have a question. Alison, you know the external audit that's going to be done in August time? How are they planning to do that? Are they going to do it remotely with, you know, the testing that they have to do? You provide the information or quite, how's it going to work in an nutshell?
That's a good question and I'm not sure myself yet, as the honest answer. But I think, I mean, we'll see how things go along, but I think it will be done, if we can do it remotely. So, we'll see how that goes. I'll get a chat with them before we come into the next committee and I'll try and give you an update on that.
Yeah, it's just the practicalities of it. Is it going to take longer than normal? Or, you know, what sort of issues can we, hopefully, you know, there won't be any, but you never know with, everything's like a spinning top at the moment. Appreciate that.
I suppose the biggest issues with the valuations probably can all be done remotely. So, they'll ask for our working papers for the, from the valuer and any evidence that support those valuations and they'll compare those to what their own valuers' knowledge and indices' expectations are. Perhaps potentially is the management override of controls, where they actually want to come in and test our systems directly and they want to come with the reports whilst they're in, whilst they're present. So, that might be an issue where that we need to resolve with them. They will have been through a number of audits before ours. So, I think they're starting audits next month actually with some local authorities, but August is the earliest that will come to us. So, they'll have it all worked out before they get to us, I'm sure.
So, has it got to be signed off by the end of November?
We have to sign off by the end of August and the audit has to be finalized by the end of November. So, there is an audit committee in November to allow that to happen.
Okay, so is that going to have a knock-on effect with next year's audit?
That's another good question. There's been a lot of issues with external audit over the last year. So, even without COVID-19 delaying things, some authorities, I think I'm right in saying, still not been signed off for last year. So, I think that has a knock-on effect, a knock-on impact into the current year. So, that together with COVID-19 perhaps is presenting external auditors with quite a lot of difficulty. But I'm told that they're not expecting it to be an issue with us. And we were signed off in the, in the, in the, in the, in the normal fashion last year. So, I don't expect there to be any particular issues, just at that time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor Greensmith. And finally, councillor Thomas.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Right. I'll move the motion, which is on.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody voting against? Anybody abstaining? I assume therefore it's passed. Thank you very much. Right, that takes us on to, if I can get to it. Item number nine. Local code of corporate governance, 2020-21. Also, it's the monitoring officer, who is, I presume?
It's me, Helen Barrington-Bob.
I couldn't think of your name for the moment.
That's okay. You probably can't see my face, Chair, so thank you, thank you very much. So, members of the committee should now be familiar with this annual report, which seeks approval for the local code on corporate governance for the forthcoming year. Unfortunately, it's another report that was due to come before this committee in March, but has unfortunately been delayed for a couple of months due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The report is straightforward and I hope you've all read it. And the amendments to the local code for this particular financial year are shown in italics and strike through for ease of reference. In the main, you'll note that the document is updated or has been updated to show progress on a number of measures. I don't intend to go through all of them today, but would just flag up the fact that we haven't made as much progress on the constitution review action as we expected. And that was at the beginning of the year due to the impact of two additional elections that we weren't expecting to run. So, the European election and also the SNAP general election, which obviously had quite an impact on democratic services. And then more recently, the COVID-19 pandemic during quarter four of last year. However, in saying that significant work has been carried out behind the scenes and we do expect to be in a position to take an updated version of the constitution to be approved by council during this financial year. Just in case any member of the committee is wondering, I don't intend to amend the local code to include any specific reference to COVID-19. My view is that this is about the general corporate governance arrangements of the council, which should be sufficient enough effectively to deal with every eventuality. And in my view, we don't need to add anything specifically into our local code to reflect COVID-19. Obviously, you would appreciate that the impact of the pandemic on our work and our operations has had an impact on some of our governance arrangements. And in particular, again, just to alert you to the fact that we have a quite specific decision-making process, very streamlined, efficient decision-making process behind the scenes that we introduced to make sure that significant decisions, particularly to close facilities or to suspend services, were made in accordance with the constitution and in accordance with law. So, all of those key decisions in terms of their significance were made by the leader of the council. All the key decision in a legal perspective decisions were made in accordance with the legislative requirements. So, all the relevant notices were published. Consultation with the scrutiny chair was taking place behind the scenes if that was required. And from my perspective as monitoring officer, I'm happy that we have maintained really quite robust governance arrangements during COVID-19 around that decision-making process. So, that's all I wish to say, Chair, but I'm happy to take any questions if any member of the committee have any.
Thank you, Helen. Right, again, questions? Councillor Lawrence?
It's not a question, just a comment that most of the alterations are updating. And the very last one, I was pleased to see that this is no longer happening. In the past, very rarely I have not voted, but it wasn't because I was abstaining. It was because I didn't want to vote for or against. And I never understood why we started bringing in. But obviously, it's been quietly dropped because I wasn't aware that it'd been dropped. It doesn't require any, any comment from the officers.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clooney?
I don't have any particular questions, just seems very robust, a very robust document. I could say that I have been consulted as.
And I could say that I have been consulted as the Chair of the Scrutiny Committee on events as well.
Councillor Elliot?
No questions, just.
Councillor Fox?
No question, thank you.
Councillor Greensmith?
No questions, thank you.
And councillor Thomas?
No questions, and I very much appreciate the detail in the report.
Yes, I did too. Right, so the recommendation is that the Local Code of Corporate Governance for 2021 be approved. Now, was it seconded?
Yeah, I was seconded.
Thank you. Right, any voting against? Any abstaining? I assume therefore that it has passed. Right, that moves on to item ten. If I remember rightly, it's any other items that the Chair considers urgent. The only thing that is urgent is the health of everybody under the current situation. I would like to thank all members of the committee and all attendees, whether from external organizations or from officers, to this meeting for being very patient. And thank you all.
Well, could we record our thanks rather than, because normally, they wouldn't be recorded to the officers and to the representatives of BDO. And I understand that this is the first meeting to take place. So we've been somewhat like guinea pigs, and nothing's gone very well. And I look forward to many more of them.
Our next meeting's on the seventh of July, so it's not long away. And then the next one is pretty fourth of November, so we've all got a nice long break. Right, thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, cheers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Bye.
Bye.